Michaela reminds me of the student who is in the class and she always asks the more practical questions. I mean, they're very great questions. But her questions come with such insightfulness in a very practical way. She keeps us grounded and she keeps us effervescent in terms of how we respond to the work. And we are very happy that she has taken on this fourth spot today. And the topic itself is very interesting, judging versus passing judgment. So, Michaela, we are so happy to have you, Coach, in our session today. And you take it away.
Oh, thank you so much. Look, guys, I have been on the recovery cycle cognitively since January. You guys all know that my brain and body shut down in January. And I have been on a very, very tough and challenging and growth-worthy journey since January. And the fact that I'm doing this presentation today, I was just praying. I'm like, Lord, just be with me because my, you know, the brain sometimes can be a little tricky. And I know that I am in a safe space with you guys. You guys are my family and my friends, and I know that I'm in a safe space. And I don't have any need to feel nervous or to feel like I need to hold back because of that. So I wanted to thank you and say, let's go ahead. What I'd like to do, because this helps me, and I think for me, I like visual and audio. I brought a slide presentation to you that also has some video involved in it as well, so that it can walk us through today's study. But give us a little bit of flavor, if you will, with doing this. So I have a question for you all. What would it be like if you were sitting in the audience as Jesus shared His iconic Sermon on the Mount? Have you ever taken a moment to draw closer to the Word, as if it were being said directly to you by Jesus? As we enter into this conversation around judging versus passing judgment, take a moment to picture to yourself, you being in the first century, along the shores of the Sea of Galilee, near Capernaum. I want you to picture in this moment right now, picture you being there in this moment. So we're going to read the Word together right now in video for now, which I think you're going to really enjoy. Your job right now, though, is to be present and to watch the following video as if you were sitting right in the front row as Jesus is sharing His words of salvation with us and how He delivers the lines of this really important gospel. Now, I know that the gospel are not lines, but He's an actor and He has to follow the script, right? And so we're going to be using a little bit of that terminology today as well. Please take note, though, of the way the actor is portraying Jesus. And what I'm going to invite you to do is I'm going to invite you to watch how the actor portrays love and joy while he is sharing this important message to us in the moment. Look, when I first saw this depiction of the Book of Matthew, I realized what I was missing while reading the Bible. What I was missing was the ability to listen to the Word and to literally picture myself hearing these words directly from Jesus. It never occurred to me to picture Him talking directly to me, guys. And it never occurred to me really to put myself in that situation. And when I did this, oh, wow, boy, did everything change. So let's go ahead and picture ourselves in the front row. I want you to do it with me, guys. I want you to really be in the moment and picture yourself in that front row because you are on the Sea of Galilee right now. We're on the shores and we're with Jesus as He's talking to us. Okay, let's go ahead and get this party started. Thank you, Jesus, for the words you're about to give us. Here we go.
Do not judge, or you too will be judged. For in the same way you judge others, you will be judged. And with the measure you use, it will be measured to you. Why do you look at the speck of sawdust in your brother's eye and pay no attention to the plank in your own eye? How can you say to your brother, "Let me take the speck out of your eye", when all the time there is a plank in your own eye? You hypocrite. First, take the plank out of your own eye, then you will see clearly to remove the speck from your brother's eye. Do not give dogs what is sacred. Do not throw your pearls to pigs. If you do, they may trample them under their feet and then turn and tear you to pieces. Ask, and it will be given to you. Seek, and you will find. Knock, and the door will be open to you. For everyone who asks receives. He who seeks finds. And to him who knocks, the door will be opened. Which of you, if his son asks for bread, will give him a stone? Or if he asks for a fish, will give him a snake? If you then, though you are evil, know how to give good gifts to your children, how much more will your Father in heaven give good gifts to those who ask Him? So in everything, do to others what you would have them do to you. For this sums up the law and the prophets.
Enter through the narrow gate; for wide is the gate, and broad is the road that leads to destruction. And many enter through it. But small is the gate, and narrow the road that leads to life. And only a few find it.
Let's give Jesus a round of applause right now. Yes, all right. I love it. Thank you, Lord, for that message. And we're going to take that message and we're going to move forward as a group, and we thank you. Okay, so a question for you. What was it like for you envisioning being in the audience as Jesus is sharing His message? Like if He was talking directly to you? Can I have one person volunteer to share with us what it was like picturing yourself right there as Jesus is talking to you? Who would like to share?
I'll go ahead.
Yay, hi Lance.
Hello, thank you for that, by the way. I have to say, you know, when you read these words, you get something out of it. But to your point, you know, just seeing them being portrayed has like a whole new, you know, feeling to it. And it did make it, you know, and I really appreciate your inviting us to envision ourselves there and to, you know, to take it seriously, you know? Because sometimes if you look at, you know, an actor or whatever, you might be doing exactly what we're talking, might be judging, you know? That's not what Jesus looks like or whatever comes into your head, you know? So when you stick to the Word and you see the heartfelt performance, you know, again, I think it's going to cause me to even take on that personality sometimes now when I look at these words and, you know, understand that it's not like a... I think what I looked at these words before was almost like a form of begging, like, like there's begging us not to do these things. Don't do these things, they're so bad. I'm trying to convince you not to do these things. When really, it's, you know, it's really, you know, more of a compassionate, you know, salutation. You know, I want these things for you. Rather than, you know, this beseeching wailing that I might have characterized before. You know, imagine, you know, having the Word of God and relational tangibility. What do you do with it, you know? So I think this is a really thoughtful way to, you know, share these words and allow people to, once again, take on these life lessons, so they can better their lives and pass the Word of Jesus, so.
Lance, and you're right. Look, I grew up with the dogma of religion hanging over my head. And that's really, for me, that's been the toughest part about stepping into my path with God is because it has to be done this way. You know, like there's this, oh, the Lord is speaking. And you know what? I kind of just want to be best friends with Jesus. And that's what I was looking for. So thank you so much, Lance. And let's go ahead and move on because we have a lot of cool work to do today. But before we move on, let's take a step back to our current path in the gift of discernment, right? We've been in that conversation. So what is discernment? Ultimately, discernment means to understand or know something through the power of the Holy Spirit. At first, discernment was really intimidating for me. But when I kind of breathed and broke it down, it became less of that dogmatic feeling and more of a, okay, this is good, I can do this. We've been praying for the gift of discernment for the last six to eight weeks. It might be even longer, but my brain, who knows? Right? And when I was reading and praying, it became really clear to me, guys, that there's an act of discernment that needs to happen when we are judging righteously versus passing judgment. And I was like, pff, when that happened. And guess what? Another pff moment was there's a big difference between passing judgment and judging righteously. So we're going to go ahead and go into that together as a group. Look, because we are nerdy as a group, and I'm talking about me and mostly you. There, look, this is an expository study of the Word. That's why we're here. So let's break down the actual meaning of to judge as a verb or judgment as a noun. The verb to judge means to evaluate, assess, consider a case, to pronounce a verdict or decision. When I think back to myself, though, I realize that I have pronounced many verdicts about other people and believed those verdicts to be true. And you know what? This made me really sad. Hashtag shame on me. But the noun judgment carries the meaning of the ability to make considered decisions or to come to sensible conclusions. Look, there's so much to uncover here. And before we do that, let's go into the Bible to find out what the Word has to say about all this. Because I didn't want to add my opinion to this. So I kept coming back to the Word over and over again in this last two weeks. And above all, God calls us to judge and evaluate ourselves first before we do anything else. Our job is, what I learned, our job is to take stock of our motives, our thoughts, and our reactions in the moment. Why? Because this is ultimately our primary sphere of responsibility as Christians. Again, something to ponder. Let's look at the Word real quick. John 7, verse 24, reads, "Do not judge by appearances..." And I'm going to add a little bit of flavor to these words. "Do not judge by appearances, but judge with right judgment." Like seriously, every time this happened, I was like, oh, man, I got some work to do. Next, Matthew 7, because that's what we're doing today, right? "For with what judgment you judge, you will be judged; and with the measure that you use, it will be measured back to you." Once I got real with this, I was like, ooh, girl, you got some work to do. Look, one of the most important results of God's redemptive and transformational work in us is righteous judgment and discernment. I didn't know this before I did this study. But as a Christian, judging righteously serves as a basis for every decision you make. The righteous judgment is the foundation for healing ourselves, guys, for healing ourselves from being critical, from being self-righteous, and for being flat-out yucky. The mentality and focus of Christians in general ought to be to really save sinners and restore believers. I didn't know this. Not to judge and condemn, but we definitely need to exercise discernment in that moment before anything else. Because when Christians deteriorate into keeping records of the wrongs that other people are doing and look over, then looking over one another's shoulder in suspicion, like, hmm, I wonder what she's up to, or I wonder what that's all about. And sometimes we're even in the hope of catching another person sinning. Once we do that, we are so far away from Christ, and we also have fallen short of Christ's call. This study, guys, was a major wake-up call for me. And I wanted to share that with you like this because that's how it occurred for me in the moment. Withholding our judgment when someone does something that we don't agree with or that when they make a choice that conflicts with our beliefs, that's not easy. Even if we don't voice our judgment to the person that we've taken issue with, the attempt to bottle it up or cover it up usually results in conveying it in other ways. For example, by giving the silent treatment, mm, guilty, or, I'm not angry, I'm just really disappointed. Or we automatically start gossiping with a friend, a family member, or somebody to share what the other person did wrong. We fall into this trap. But as Christians, are we really forbidden from passing judgment? I don't know, because the more I kept reading, I was like, oh, 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 it's crazy. But when you do a really surface reading from some of the Bible verses, it can trick you a little bit and it can trick you and to lead you down the road of, oh, well, I can just skim and look and I'll get the message. Right? But what I learned is that you can't skim. You have to actually go into the Word to find out. And look, if you've ever been confused about what the Bible says about the validity of expressing critical opinions about someone or how you should articulate your judgment, and if you should articulate it at all, the next two Bible verses will provide us with a starting point, just a starting point, for developing our understanding and discernment of the truth. Leviticus 19, verse 15, says, "Do not pervert justice; do not show partiality to the poor or favoritism to the great, but judge your neighbor fairly." In Proverbs 31:9, it says, "Speak up and judge fairly; defend the rights..." This really struck me. "Defend the rights of the poor and the needy." They're not talking about cash poor people. They're talking about spirit poor people and needy, spiritually needy people. Again, mind blown. Look, we're called to forgive and to forget, just as our Father has done for us in our sins. God is the only one who knows people's hearts. And He knows the verdict for His children, not us. We are not the judge of this world. We only have one judge who can pass judgment. And He, my darlings, sit on a mighty throne. Okay, in 2 James 5:9, it says, and this is me, because I'm a master grumbler, "Do not grumble against one another, brothers and sisters," because that's what they meant, "so that you may not be judged." Behold, the judge is standing at the door. Gives me chills. Look, we need to make sure that we steer clear from the passing of judgment. That's essentially what we're talking about here. For example, right? When you cross a street and you look both ways and you decide to continue to keep walking, that's a judgment call. See how the words kind of get twisted up? That's a judgment, but it's also a judgment call. But whether you're passing judgment on others or feeling judged by others, at its core, this type of judgment is an opinion or a decision based on thoughts, feelings, or previous evidence. And that's what makes it tricky. Okay, the next time you catch yourself in judgment, hopefully you'll hear my annoying voice in the background saying, "Stop! Stop whatever you are doing. Stop and get right into prayer. Literally, stop in your tracks and get right into prayer." Now, if you're driving, don't stop and just pull over. Or when you have a moment, stop. I know me, because I was the bad, you know, angry driver before this. Right? So in that moment, when you are about to send some vitriol to somebody, just stop. You, my darlings, all of us, we judge by human standards. The Lord passes judgment on no one. And it says, "But if I do judge," and that's Him talking, not us, "my decisions are true, because I am not alone. I stand with the Father who sent me." In John 8, verses 15 and 16. Ah, I just get chills. Because the most important criterion is not to judge by mere appearances, i.e., not to rely on our natural perceptions and logical conclusions. With our limited thinking and abilities, guys, I'm telling you, we see and understand things in part and very different, in a very different way. We see it in a distorted way. Please don't trust your own feelings and thoughts around this. Because through the lens that we see the world through, we see the lens through past wounds and past hurts and past experiences. And that's how we project that judgment onto other people, so be careful. Right? Because God calls us to rise from this kind of carnal thinking and through our connection with Him, to see things from a higher, more heavenly perspective. In Isaiah 55:8 and 9, it reads, "For my thoughts are not your thoughts; neither my ways are your ways. As the heavens are higher than the earth, so are my ways higher than your ways and my thoughts higher than your thoughts." Oh, my goodness, when I pictured the Lord speaking to me around this, it was like moment after moment kept happening. And I'm encouraging you guys to do the same thing. Let's keep going. All right, so all of this, so what now? What would it look like if you were about to pass judgment on someone and you literally stopped yourself in your tracks? What if you asked yourself, is this passing judgment right now? Or am I judging or slash evaluating if this is for me or not? Am I passing judgment right now or am I judging righteously? Quick check in, right? How would Jesus handle this in this moment is the ultimate question. I'm going to give you some more Bible readings, which, ah, this is great, right? And second, so this is about judging righteously, right? 2 Timothy 3:16 reads, "All Scripture is given by inspiration of God and is profitable for doctrine, for reproof, for correction, for instruction in righteousness before the judgment seat of God." Let's go to Romans to talk about passing judgment, right? By contrast, Romans 14:10. And I'm going to do it in my annoying little New York Puerto Rican voice. "Why do you pass judgment on your brother? Or do you despise your brother?" Really deep question. "For we will all stand before the judgment seat of God." All right, because I love the how-to, let's get into the how-to. So how do we judge righteously is what I want to know. Because that's what I was looking for when I was doing the study for this. We can share with the person that you are judging. You can share with the person that you are judging a kind word of encouragement, maybe. Or you can praise them for something great you notice in their lives. Or you can share how you felt the first time when you accepted Jesus as your Lord and Savior and how this has changed you. Or if none of these fit the bill, pray for them in that precise moment. In all conversations, always make sure your counsel is coming from a place of love, AKA Jesus. When you do this, all other judgment and feelings of being critical will melt away. I'm telling you, it works immediately when you're in judgment or you're judging someone. It will go away if you have Jesus step in front. Because none of us live a perfect life. You know that, and I know that. Only Jesus did, and we all fall short of the glory of God. If someone you know is facing hardships from being caught in the world, don't judge them. The best thing that you can do is let them know that you care for them and that you want to contribute to them in some way. Don't separate yourself. Draw yourself closer and love on them. I'm going to say that again. Draw yourself closer and love on them. This will give all the glory to God in that moment. That's the cool part, that you don't even need to say anything to God because He knows that you're glorifying Him in that moment when you do that. Let the person that you're judging know with a heart of love that Scripture calls us to walk in a certain way. Otherwise, we're going to face unnecessary trials and hardships that draw us away from the blessings that God has in store for us. Guys, encourage them with Scripture and prayer, resting your hope in the Lord who will carry out His work in them, not yours. And guess what? If you don't know them, I'm going to bring it back again. Pray for them. This will instantaneously delete whatever criticisms you may have in the moment. But before we continue, let's stop and give honor and praise to the Father. So let's go ahead and pray this together. You don't have to close your eyes or bow your head. We know we're talking directly to the Lord right now, right? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the people you place in our lives. We thank you for the iron sharpening and for the brothers and sisters in Christ who you use as instruments to bring us closer to you. We know that your will is not always made obvious to us. We know. We forget, but we know. And we kindly ask for your guidance in our walk. And we ask that our hearts be softened and our words be tender. We ask for clarity when it comes to discernment, Lord, not to be distracted with our will, but directed by your will. We thank you, God, for your protection in our lives, for your provision and for your mercy and for your grace. Lord, forgive us for our judgmental nature because through your word and teachings, we have learned today that righteous judging is our starting point with you. is our starting point with you. Being, being judgmental is not of you, Lord. Please forgive us as we learn to stand in grace, because we have been provided redemption through the sacred blood of the Lamb. We thank you, Father, for your sovereign Word and pray we accurately represent it. May we always be humble and serve others, pointing them to the cross. All the praise and glory goes to you. In Jesus' name, amen.